...the interests of the community as a whole. For those of you who may not be familiar with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the board hears all requests for variations in zoning and special use permits. The City of Lake Forest is committed to conducting open meetings. To achieve that goal, the board has adopted meeting procedures that ensure that all parties have an opportunity to speak. The procedures are detailed on the agendas available at the back of the room. This meeting is also broadcast on cable television for the last time. Speaking on behalf of the attorney, board, and city staff, our goal is to move each petition through the review process as quickly as possible while at the same time balancing the interests of the petitioners, neighboring property owners, and the larger community. So with that introduction, we will have the board introduction, starting with my right here.
Michael Steeman, Third Ward.
Mark Paswzi, Fourth Ward.
Louis Pickus, Second Ward.
Richard Plonsker, Second Ward.
Kevin Lewis, Third Ward.
Nancy Novit, First Ward.
And from the city, we have Kathy Serniak, Director of Community Development. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of the minutes from the April 4th, 2017 meeting. Do we have any comments, clarifications, corrections from the minutes? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion for approval, please?
So moved. Second.
All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, minutes approved. Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have consideration of a request for approval of variances from the side yard setback requirements to allow a front porch addition and alterations to the existing residence at 180 Etteridge Road. The owners are Michael and Sarah Metzger, Representative Jim Dooley. Before we start, do we have a declaration of conflicts of interest or any ex parte contacts from anyone on the board? Okay, Mr. Dooley?
Or Metzger, it's okay.
Can I swear in, so please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and members of the board. Real quickly, my wife and I, Sarah and Mrs. Jim Dooley, longtime residents, both born here in Lake Forest. Our children are sixth-generation Lake Foresters. We're certainly committed to the character of the community, specifically our neighborhood, which is kind of the West Park, smaller neighborhood. The whole impetus for the variance request started when our kitchen roof, kitchen ceiling started to leak, started to look at the roof in our house. Because of its construction, it caused some leaking problems because there's odd angles. What we're going to do is remove kind of a facade, a gambriel roof. You can kind of see here on this picture, this, the two sides on the left and right kind of pop out a bit. If you look on the far left of this drawing, you can see where that triangle sits. It's, it's a facade, there's, there's, there's nothing, it doesn't add square footage to our house. It creates some odd roof angles, caused some leaking. So we said, all right, let's remove that. And when we got to that, we realized we need to replace the siding. And when we started going through that process, we said, well, what else can we do to kind of enhance the house, make it fit more within the neighborhood? Probably thirty to forty percent of the homes in the, in our street, on Etteridge, have a front porch. We thought adding a front porch would be very nice. So we got into the process, came in and talked with the city staff members. They pointed out a couple of issues. One, primarily, the existing roof line, where the eve comes out, is what's the primary driver of creating these variances. The house was built in, I think, 1924, 1927. It's an odd platted lot. The lot, I guess, is non-conforming, it's only fifty feet wide, it needs to be seventy-five feet, but I think there's maybe three lots on Etteridge Road that are more than fifty feet wide. So it's, it was, I guess it wasn't a code back then, but it was pretty standard back in that point in time. And our house is situated so that it's only about seven and a half feet from the west property line, so it's already missing that ten-foot setback. We're not expanding the envelope at all in the house, we're actually removing some of the roof line that extends into that setback, primarily this gambrel that kind of goes that last half down, and then adding the roof. We're going to put on all-new siding on the house, which, as you can see, is, whoa, pretty much needed, it's rusted aluminum siding. And then the front porch will be the addition. On the west side of the house, the setback is, like I said, the existing roof line, and then the front porch is actually going to extend six inches into that setback. We'd originally come up with a full front porch going from both sides of the house, covering the whole front. And talking with staff, they asked us to come up with a couple, a couple of different ideas, and one of them was to shrink it back in about two and a half feet on each side. So now, the porch itself is not within the setback, but the eve of the porch is within the side yard setback by about six inches. There's no front yard setback variance required from the addition of this porch because we've sized it, sized it to fit within the forty-foot setback. I'm not sure what else to cover. Getting a couple of benefits. One, as you can see, this is kind of a picture looking up, that gambrel on the front, there's no insulation back there, so one of the nice things of kind of taking off the old siding, putting on new, we're going to add some insulation. That's a benefit for us that we're pretty happy about, plus kind of improve the position of the house. These, we talked about where the setbacks sit. In your packet, you actually have a better definition, where the circles are showing where these setbacks occur, and it's on the eaves. What else to say? Here's our landscaping plan. Originally, we had some bridal wreaths all in front of our house, that, we've, we've moved out. We think the bridal wreath will cover up our porch, that's going to look pretty nice. We're going to end up going with hosta and potentially some very short hydrangea behind the hosta. So anyways, standards of variance are some things we'd like to cover. Does it fit within the neighborhood? We're adding on a front porch, that's probably the biggest difference. As I said, the picture on the left is our neighbor to the west. The picture on the right is a neighbor that's three houses to the west. The reason I include it is just because they, you know, that was a new porch that was recently built in the last five years, that is, is, you know, they're prob, they'll probably only have one foot setback from the property line on this one, so it's, there's certainly instances within the neighborhood that the homes exceed the ten yards, ten-foot setback. Conditions of the variance, like I said, the house was, the area was subdivided before this code existed, so we have a lot that, a lot and a placement of the house that's been in place prior to the code being enacted, so we haven't changed anything. The, the house itself hasn't been changed since it was originally built. Another hardship, well, I kind of covered one and two, and I think adding this front porch certainly won't increase any congestion, cause any reduction of light to the, or ventilation of the other properties, and it certainly will enhance property values, certainly for me and probably for the rest of my neighbors, now that the rusted aluminum siding will be removed. And I don't know if you want to see pictures of the plans of the house at all. Are there any other questions, or if there's anything else you'd like to hear?
Oh. We'll, we'll get that in a minute.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's...
Okay, identification of issues by staff. Kathy?
Not much to add, that was a pretty thorough presentation. This area of the community actually predates the adoption of any zoning code. Often you see projects for which the zoning regulations have changed. In fact, this subdivision was approved, I believe, in 1907. The home was built either just before or just after that. The city didn't even have a zoning code in place. So the hardship truly is that this area developed consistent with what was permitted in the early 1900s. In this case, there is no significant expansion proposed to the house. What is requested is, on the east side, to approve the, the roof modification. The house already encroaches about a foot into the side yard setback on the east side. That roof modification, because it is within the setback, does require the variance, as Mr. Metzger noted. On the west side, the existing line of the house encroaches about three feet, four inches into the setback. So again, that roof modification will affect some portion of the structure that is within that setback. And then the addition of the front porch, as Mr. Metzger noticed, noted, it was adjusted proportionally to have the form of the porch fit within the setbacks, and to allow for symmetry, on the west side, about six inches of the eve will encroach. So this really is a request for a variance, to simply allow an existing house to be updated, repaired. You do have findings in your staff report in support of the variance request, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Questions and requests for clarification from the board to petitioner or staff?
I have a question. So did you originally want the front porch to be the width of the house? But city suggested that you bring it to within the guidelines? Okay. I like it the width of the house, I think it's more in keeping with the rest of the facades on the street as well. So I don't know if we're allowed to suggest that it be...
Kathy, what, what was the thinking there?
Simply that, whenever possible, we do minimize the encroachment. You can certainly recommend that there be further adjustment. If you do that, you should consider whether the eve on the west side would extend six inches further into the setback than the existing house. Certainly many styles of architecture support porches that give some relief from the outer walls of the house. So from an architectural standpoint, it's not inconsistent.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, public testimony. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this petition? Okay, hearing none. Final questions from the board to petitioner or staff? Questions?
Well, I guess I'll raise, because I agree with a board member noted, in terms of the porch being the, the full width of the, the home, what's the step here? Do we ask if they prefer that route? Do we, how do we address that issue?
You can certainly approve a variance of a greater distance and allow the porch to be increased. Again, you should note whether currently the house is set back three feet, four inches, with the porch the full width, the encroachment would then be two feet, ten inches? I'm, I'm sorry, it would be the other way. It would be three feet, ten inches. So you'd want to grant the larger variance because there would be a further encroachment than exists today. We didn't notice it that way to the property owner on the other side, but certainly you have that prerogative.
Okay, is there a slide, do you have another slide of what the, of how, what that would look like if it was expanded to the full width of the house? I'm, I'm having trouble visualizing the eve of this roof line on the porch, how much of an impact it has. My expectation with that is that it would just be the same width of the house, and that the roof would stop where the exterior walls of the house stop. I don't, I don't understand the eve issue, because I can't visualize it from what's in the packet.
The shed roof? The porch is the shed roof?
Come to the floor.
I'm looking at the proposed elevation that shows the south facade, I guess? That's what I'm looking at? Where it looks like the roof is, is, however meant, two, two feet, eight inches in from the exterior side of the house? Yeah?
Yeah, it's not going to be...
Okay, so...
Anyway, so it's, so the roof of the porch will just match the extension on the, the house's roof. So it won't extend... What did you refer to this roof as type? It's a rail, it's a, it's a shed roof. The rail, the rail overhang on the shed, shed roof porch addition would be the same width as the existing overhang on the house.
Okay.
So the variance, I don't think, should increase from...
It doesn't make the house any wider, does it?
Correct. And the, and the eaves will line up, so this, this eve won't extend out any further than the existing eve as well.
Do you prefer to go to the wider porch that you originally tried to design?
I think we do.
Still do?
Yes.
How much additional linear distance is it? Two foot eight?
You could, again, you could simply set, say that the encroachment for the porch shouldn't be any further than the extent of the existing house. Architecturally, having some relief from the width of the house is often more architecturally appropriate, but you can certainly do it, we did not intend to send this to the building review board.
So does that create an extra step or more time in the process if they go back to the way they originally wanted it?
I think we'd have to look at the design, but you could certainly allow for that flexibility.
So can, can option two be completed with the same three-foot, four-inch setback as we currently...
You can direct that. It, it would all depend on how the porch is designed. You could direct that it be designed in that way.
Is that consistent with your, your plans for an enlarged porch? Or would it increase the variance to whatever that might be, three feet, ten inches, if we give a six-inch?
No, because right now, like, it's my understanding that the, the variance is being, biggest, the largest variance, I have to look at the number, I don't have my paperwork, but it's being created by the eve of the existing roof on the main house.
Okay. And this would not exceed that?
No, it would not. It would actually, it would match that, it would match.
So, again, the pictures of the neighbors' houses, so we can just see how the porches line up on the other houses on the block?
I'm just way too fast in deleting things, yeah. Sorry.
That's fine.
Right.
So the, the one on the left is, is consistent with what they're proposing? Is that correct?
That's right, they're right there. That's right.
And in fact, the, the one on the left, it would be even, it almost sounds from what I'm looking at, like this roof is only going to come off the front.
Correct.
And there won't be anything on the sides.
That's consistent with the, the photo on the left is what you're proposing on the plan that's before us, and the photo on the right is what you're, is being discussed as an option for us. So really, it's, there's precedent in both cases.
Yeah.
Yeah, the one on the left is more...
So staff, or chairman, is, is there further direction from staff as to what, what, how we would proceed in this case?
You can simply approve a variance. It's, it sounds like the direction you want to go, to allow encroachment into the setbacks on both the east and west side, no further than the extent of the existing house. And then we would look at the, the design that comes in and, and process that as it needs to be processed. But you could allow that flexibility, and it would simply be approving a variance of, a variance consistent with the encroachment of the existing house on both the east and west side.
And then you allow for that option.
I don't think you necessarily want to design the porch right here on the floor, since that isn't your purview, but...
No.
My life's concern is if we go through this process, is it going to add more time?
Well, I suppose that would be your option, if you decide to go one way or the other.
And the way you, you could approve it with a variance of up to, and then we could look at the design and we could advise the petitioners on, on options for either moving forward or if further reviews required.
So if we did that, they could still opt for something smaller?
Yes.
They could take this smaller porch and go with it, based on the approval that we give tonight, to choose to do something wider if you want.
Your language would be a variance up to...
It'd be inclusive, yeah.
Yes.
And we don't want to necessarily increase the amount of time if you just want to move forward exactly as how you walked in here tonight, so if, if by giving them the option, we increase the time just because it has to be reconsidered, I don't know that that's really something that you...
No, giving the option doesn't increase the time. We can work with the petitioners, knowing we have that flexibility. So you're simply allowing more flexibility.
What about notification for...
Kathy, this is going to require additional notification to the neighbors?
Seems like they would.
I guess that, that's a technicality. We, we did not notice it as a full width front porch. We don't, we weren't contacted by any neighbors.
You still have to do it, though.
So we did do notification, but you can simply approve it and we can just move it forward with that flexibility.
The neighbors want to hear. The neighbors agree. Definitely.
If the neighbors want to testify and support that, then, then we'd have it on the record and...
Well, it sounds like you want to get started pretty quickly, right? You're ready. So we don't want, we don't want on, you know, Thursday for you to walk into the planning department and they go, oh, you know, based on what the zoning board did the other night, it's going to take another three weeks just because we have to do this. We don't want to create, you know, that sort of hurdle for you, I don't think.
Chairman, I think if we heard from the neighbors formally, that would help resolve that, don't you?
I mean, we can allow some public testimony if anybody wants to get up and speak. So could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Eileen O'Keefe. I live at 172 Etteridge, which is the home on the left. Not as nice a picture as the other house, but we'll talk about that later. It's a better view. I'm very supportive of what the Metzgers are trying to do. They've had this, their house for a long time, they've been waiting a long time to be able to do some improvements. I think what they're proposing to do fits in with the neighborhood, and the little bit of encroachment, or whatever you're calling it, onto my side property line, I think, is, is just fine. So that's my support.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have any other questions? So why don't we, why don't we just move to discussion and comment? So here's where I'm at. I'm, I'm a little torn on this one because I agree with the, the comments here that it, it, it would improve the appearance, not that what the petitioner has put forth looks bad, but I think it would, it would look good if it was the full width. I'm going to go back to something that we discussed a couple of meetings ago, and that's precedent. And I'm concerned that we allow this, and then the next petitioner that comes is going to have that expectation that we're going to give them that as well, and, and the next one may not be as simple. So it's just, it's a concern of mine, even though I think in this case it does make some sense, we need to be kind of mindful of what we should be doing in the grand scheme of things, in the broader context, I think. So I'm just throwing that out there, if anybody has a comment on that. So you, you're saying you think we should go with the way that it was approved originally, not give the option? Yes.
You know what, Chairman, I share your concern about precedent. I think that was something that, I think is a, it's, it's a little awkward slope that we sometimes go on. While I, I agree that, obviously, looking at these two pictures, both of them are attractive options, and if that's the case, we are, but I'm also concerned about notice where somebody that isn't here at the meeting tonight, that had a right to object, isn't there. I think the safer course of action is to approve this variance as it's presented to us. The petitioners, if, if this is indeed correct, have the option to come back again for a, additional variance upon this with the proper notification, and then we can consider it at that time with that way. It's really, they're two open issues, as far as I'm concerned, the notification and the, and the precedence.
Yeah.
But I am in support of what's being presented before us tonight, and I would, I would vote in favor of it as presented, certainly.
I tend to agree with what's been stated. I think, I ask myself, had it been presented like the house on the right, what they had originally wanted, I would have been in favor of that. So I wouldn't dissuade petitioner from pursuing that. I tend to think I would support it. With regards to precedent, I think I trust, again, this board to make the right decisions in the right cases, and I look back again and say, if it was presented that way originally, I would have supported it. I do believe the notice is a, a big concern to me. I think city staff and our attorney would probably be best suited to handle that, but I would be comfortable with a, a recommendation to approve up to the existing encroachment, and allow staff and the attorney to then figure out if they do need to do notification and come back to us.
And I agree with Commissioner Seaman. I think it's important that homeowners get what they want, if it's within a reasonable, if it's a reasonable request and fits well within the neighborhood and everything else. They, no offense, Kathy, they, they brought the, the reduced size porch because they were advised to do so.
Exactly.
And I think if they had done what they wanted to do in the beginning, we would have had a petition with a full width porch.
Right, but couldn't you have objected, objected in the beginning when the city said we'd prefer you to do something that's, that's a little narrower, and said that's not really what we want to do, and if you had wanted to take the time then, you could be here now presenting for approval for the entire width of the porch that you originally talked about? Or is there some reason that...
I, I think from staff perspective, we look at hardship. A zoning variance has to be based on a hardship. Clearly, the modification of the roof and, and the facade of the existing house, which already encroached in the setback, there was a hardship. Their, their roof is leaking, modification of that portion of the house within the setback, clearly there was a hardship. That was constructed in the early 1900s. So from the staff perspective, we couldn't come up with a hardship that said, you can't create, you can't design a porch that meets the setbacks because something changed or the city did something. So the fact that some, that a porch could be designed to meet the setbacks, that led us to the conclusion that there was not a hardship that would support the porch element itself encroaching, because that's a new element that's being constructed. So it, our thought process was really around hardship which goes to the precedent issue. So that was where we were coming from. Now certainly, the board could give us direction on a finding that explained the hardship that necessitated the wider porch. I've been sitting here trying to think of that, but I think if you do proceed, we should develop a finding that supports the hardship, so that you don't set a precedent, simply from a design perspective, wider might be better, but that's not a criteria for looking at variances.
Yeah, I, I think, based on what I've heard, I would agree with Chairman Pickus and Member Lewis, that, that our role really here is to respond to the petition that's brought before us, not to make, you know, changes and decisions. Sitting here, I suppose, it might add time, but I think if, if you want to object to the change that the city suggested, you'd probably have to go back through the process and do the proper notification and all that. So I think I agree with the, the whole notion of let's, you know, let's, let's serve our specific criteria here, and let's just respond to the petition. And, but, as I've heard others say, if, if the other wider porch had been brought before us tonight, I'd also be inclined to vote for that. I just think, from a process standpoint, it's important to stick to it.
And I agree with much of what's been said here. I think my, my biggest challenge is, it seems that most of us would agree with, that had the wider porch been presented, we would be, be okay with it, accept that, and not to staff's fault, but they were directed in a different way to present that petition. So not sure how I feel about that. Secondly, the only exception I'll say about the, the notice issue that seems to be a concern to many on this board, we've heard on the record from the neighbor who is going to be most impacted by, by this, this porch. So I think that, you know, if, if anyone had a voice to complain over this, I think it would be the, the immediate neighbor, and, and she has spoken in favor of it. So I think, and that, on top of the fact that the variance is going to be no greater than what has been presented, I think we could probably argue that, that notice has been properly presented and established, in my opinion.
I'm going to agree with you on that. And I'm going to say that, you know, we talk about hardship, and, and maybe there... And I'm going to say that, you know, we talk about hardship and, and maybe there, we can't show hardship here, but it kind of flips over to hardship on the neighbor who would be impacted by this. And the neighbor has said that this would not be an impact and she would be in favor of it. So I think that kind of makes the hardship issue kind of go away.
And you can direct us to craft a finding that speaks to the hardship that supports the porch. It certainly will press, will set a precedent for future petitions, but we will craft it as carefully as we can to speak directly to this petition. I'd, I'd offer you words right now on what that finding should be. I just haven't come up with it.
I think you're good for it Kathy. I think you'll come up with the right things, but I think that, yeah, I think that, that sort of kind of solves our dilemma here about, about notice and about precedent is that, you know, the hardship issue I think kind of, kind of goes away with the, the immediate neighbor expressing support for the, for the variance. I think that, I think that really kind of makes the precedent issue go away. I, so I'm inclined to, to agree with the rest of you.
So if I'm reading the tea leaves right, then the recommendation that we perhaps are looking for then is to recommend approval of the variance as submitted along with the findings of allowing the front porch to extend no greater than the width of the existing house.
That sounds like a motion if I.
Can I add at one point, again, from a precedent standpoint, you may want to consider whether your approval is based on the fact that the front porch would remain open. We have had other situations where people come forward to enclose a porch and the hardship is based on the fact that the porch already exists. So it wouldn't be unusual for you to be clear, and we could do that in the findings, that in part, the approval was based on the fact that the porch was open, so less solid. Because at your next petition, you'll actually see that they also moved the line of their addition in based on recommendation of staff from the line of the existing encroachment, but that's a solid mass. So just a thought, if it's important and it stays open and that's your intent, then you might want to put that on as a condition.
And I think it's appropriate considering the other, the neighboring houses and how they appear as well, so.
But that's, that's, that's a hard thing for us to make a motion on is how the neighboring houses appear. Wouldn't, that's, that's kind of a hard statement to make that only if neighboring houses have an open front porch that we would allow an encroachment within it? Isn't that, is that what you're saying?
No, no. I'm speaking to the, whether the porch remains open or closed.
So, so part of our variance would actually be that we are stating that we're allowing the front porch to be the full width, subject to it remaining open?
Correct.
That, that, that part of the file on this property is they can't come back next year and ask to enclose the front porch?
Correct.
Is that kind of where we're going with this?
And the board has certainly done that before.
And I guess maybe is the petitioner open to that?
Yes.
Okay. Let's wrap this up into a nice motion, please. Mr. Lewis, if you'd be so inclined.
Well, I move to recommend the approval of the variance as submitted based on the staff report and subject to allowing the width of the front porch to extend no greater than the width of the existing home and the front porch shall remain open in perpetuity.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, variance granted.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Okay, moving on. We have consideration of a request for approval of variances from the front yard and side yard setbacks to allow a second story addition and alterations to the existing residence at 1137 Griffith Road. Owner Barbara Stevens, contract purchaser Lauren McCracken, Representative Jeff Letzler. Yes. Do we have any declaration of conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts?
Chairman, this property is currently a listing in my office and currently under contract, so I will recuse myself from this petition.
So recused.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, is this Mr. Letzler? Can you state your name, please?
Good evening, my name is Jeff Letzler. I am a project manager with Aspect Design Incorporated. I'm working with the contract.
Can I get you to, can I swear again?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly declare and affirm that the testimony you're about to give is correct to the best of your knowledge?
It is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Again, Jeff Letzler with Aspect Design Incorporated, the project manager working on this project with, it has a contract purchaser at this point that is requesting additions and remodels to the home. And kind of our design, when we looked at the home, they want to, what we want to do is keep the existing footprint. We want to work with the existing home that is there. It's currently a, a one-story ranch home, but the, the foundation system is, is in good shape. And what we want to do is remodel the existing first floor and add a two-story addition to the home. Looking through the zoning and working with staff, the property is currently in a GR3 zoning. So the current setbacks for a front yard setback are 40 feet and the side yard setbacks are six. And what we are looking at on our proposal, the north side of the property, which is a side yard, is a required six-foot setback. The existing footprint of the house is somewhat skewed to the property line. The, the kind of northwest corner is roughly 7.48 feet from the property, but as the house goes back, it, it drops down to 3.51. So one of the variances that we are looking for tonight is when we add to the second floor of the home, we've actually designed the house to come back and meet the six-foot side yard setback. So we do not have an encroachment or furthering an encroachment with our proposed construction. The zoning variance that we are looking for is literally to kind of rework that existing first floor and put a roof over it with a overhang that kind of matches the rest of the house, a six-inch over it. And at that portion, there's also a side return gutter, which again, the zoning goes to the gutter line. So that's the, the north side variance we're looking for. The, the front of the home or the west side, currently the front yard setback in GR3 is 40 feet. The home was, this whole subdivision, I believe, was originally platted in 1913 and the home itself was built in 46. At the time, the front yard setback and also with consistent neighbors in the, in the rest of the neighborhood was a 25-foot setback. So our current front yard home is roughly 27, the closest point, 25.79 feet to the road. What we are proposing is to match the front of the home with our new second story addition. So we're not going any further into the front yard setback. We are proposing a slight roof overhang over the front door to kind of look like a front porch, but we're not going any farther than the existing 25.79. And it's actually more of an overhang with brackets. So it's not necessarily columns and new concrete coming out. We're staying within that element. The, the south side, we meet the setback, the rear, we meet the setbacks. The proposed home does not need any other variance as far as FAR or height or any other items. So we're really hoping to get these variances to not literally have to demo this house for one and then not necessarily have to push it back 40 feet, which then the rest of the rhythm in the rest of the neighborhood, the homes to the south are all around that 25-foot setback. And some of the, running through your findings and the facts, the first item, the variance will not alter the essential character of the subject property and surrounding area. We believe by keeping the, and getting the variance in the front, we're not forced to like offset a second story addition, which can look aesthetically not too pleasing. And also, we would still have to do something with the existing first floor. So there's a lot of even aesthetic design issues that went into this that we felt just did not work without getting the variances. Your item two, conditions upon which the variances are requested, the existing character of the streetscape. Again, I think this really works well with the existing streetscape and what we're proposing. And we're definitely sensitive on that north side because the house is so close, the current house is so close to that north property. That's why we're not asking for any new second story variances to that north piece. The existing residence, your item three, is non-conforming due to the fact that it was constructed prior to current zoning regulations. So this was a condition not created by the, the current owners or future owners. Your item four, the variances will not impair light or ventilation to adjacent properties, increase congestion, endanger public safety, or substantially diminish property values. We believe this will actually increase property values. The overall height of our proposed building is actually a little bit lower than the building to the south and it meets by far all the zoning height requirements in the GR3 also. So I'll leave that to the board for questions.
Thank you. Identification of issues by staff, Kathy?
Thank you, Chairman Pickus. This petitioner really did go to great lengths to minimize the variance request. Again, in, in early discussions with the architect, who is quite familiar in working with zoning variances, we did stress the importance of pulling that second story addition back from the existing north line of the house because we felt it, again, it, we couldn't develop a case for a hardship when in fact, by pulling the second floor back, it meant a little bit less square footage, but it, it really was workable. So the request for a variance on the north side simply is to allow the, the portion of the first floor roof to be reconfigured as a result of that second floor addition. So there, there is no further encroachment into the north side. In fact, the mass of the two-story addition is fully compliant with the setback requirements. On the front of the house, as Mr. Letzler explained, there's a proposal to simply do a covering over the front door. It does not extend any further because this, the house is a little bit on an angle to the street. The front porch covering does not extend any further toward the front yard, toward the street than the furthest extent of the house. This is also a case where the subdivision was approved prior to the city adopting a zoning code. In this case, the subdivision established a front yard setback of 25 feet. Today, the setback requirement in this area is 40 feet. As you go down the street, virtually none of the homes were built in conformance with that front yard setback. So in the front yard, neither in the front yard nor in the north side yard is any further encroachment requested. And again, the main mass, the main addition is fully compliant with the setbacks. You do have findings in support of this request in your staff report and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kathy. Do we have any questions or requests for clarification from the board to staff or petitioner? I, I have one question and it's not really zoning related, but noticing the trees in the front of the house and that hang over the house, is the, is the extension of the, the house gonna hit the trees? Are you gonna?
There, there is one tree. Let me go back to the front elevation. This tree right here.
Yeah.
I believe, and Kathy might help me with this one, the, the forester has been out. We are proposing to remove that tree. It's actually about two feet into the current driveway and is kind of cracking that whole driveway. The front tree here is definitely remaining and that was, other issues of why we wanted to reuse and keep existing home and structure to try to best utilize existing landscaping there. We are proposing some additional landscaping features. I believe you have, I don't know if you have that drawing, the landscape plan around the house, the back of the house. And Kathy, if you could maybe help me out with that other tree by the driveway.
Yes. The city forester looked at that tree actually even before the current buyer was, had, had come to the city and that tree, because of its location so close to the house and because it's damaging the driveway, city forester really believes it should be removed even if you were doing nothing. It's just time for that one to come out. The most magnificent tree on the site is the one in the backyard, which will be unharmed.
Does anybody have any questions? Questions? Okay. Public testimony? Does anybody wish to speak regarding this petition? Okay, hearing none. Final questions from the board?
I drove down, looked at the house, looked at the plans, and I think the new design will fit beautifully into the block, looking at the houses on either side and across the street. It's an appropriate scale. I think it'll look really nice and I applaud your ability to figure out a way to minimize the setback variance and at the same time maximize the livable space in the house. I think it's a great plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Once again, I agree with Board Member Novit. I applaud you for being able to reuse what you can here. I think I would be apprehensive if it were a tear down to see what, what might go there. I think this will be very well received in the neighborhood and in, in the streetscape. I applaud you again on all those same bases and I tend to support the petition as presented.
Okay, we kind of skipped ahead a little bit. I'm going to assume that we didn't have any other questions. Did you have any other final comments that you wanted to make?
Not at this point, but open to questions, of course.
Okay. So we can now get right back into discussion. This is discussion. Does anybody have any other discussion points or comments that they wish to make on this petition from the board? I'll throw my two cents in that I, I agree. I think it's a, it's a great plan. I think it'll really, really improve the streetscape, matches the neighboring house to the south very nicely. And yeah, I think there's some good creativity there in, in pulling this, pulling it back on the north side to avoid any kind of variance condition there. So I think it was well thought out and it's, it's a, it's a good plan, good, good idea.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any other comments? Can I get a motion to approve this petition?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the variance as submitted based on the findings of staff and this board. I'm not sure what else I need to say.
Okay, can we, can we maybe just include the recommendations that are in the staff report?
Sure.
We've got a couple of items there.
Okay. I move to recommend approval of the variance as submitted based on the findings in the staff report and recommendations from city staff.
Thank you. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, variance passed. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for your time tonight. Thank you.
All right.
Kathy, thank you for all your help too. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the opportunity for the public to address the zoning board of appeals on matters not on the agenda. Hearing none. Hearing none, additional information from staff?
Actually, were you going to talk about Michelle's email or no? No? Okay, then, then I have something else. I had sent an email to Michelle just asking for clarification on what the side yard setback are per code for specific items. I had looked through the code and reviewing some of these items and was unable to find any clarification on what the side yard setback variance requirements are for, and front yard, no, the front yard was clear for, for some of the zones on how we determine is it a 10-foot side yard, eight-foot side yard and what, what some of those requirements are for such things as eaves and chimneys or bay windows and things like that. It didn't, I was looking for some clarification where I could find it in the code. Michelle had said to me in a response email that there would be some information provided at the meeting, but I know that she's not here tonight, maybe.
I can just clarify, the setbacks in each zoning district apply to any structure unless it's covered in the exception portion of the code. And the code does specifically accept out eaves in front and side, front and backyard setbacks. They do, the code does not accept, make an exception for eaves on the side yard. And the thinking with that is the side yard encroaches toward a neighboring house, whereas eaves in the front, open stoop, when they're in the front yard setback, they don't encroach on anyone's home. We can certainly give you a memo that calls out the exceptions, but the setbacks apply to everything unless they're specifically called out as an exception. So, we can detail those for you.
That's an interesting question. What about a bay window that wouldn't necessarily touch the ground, would extend out from the side of the house?
That would need to conform to setbacks.
It's a setback into the air, isn't it?
It's the same with an eve, though. It's, it's any encroachment, once you cross that line.
But not on the side. On the side, it's a setback into the air of that setback line.
Yes, and any portion of a structure that, that encroaches into the setback, if there's a below grade, completely below grade basement or garage, the setback does not apply. It's anything from the ground up unless it's accepted. And again, eaves is the one thing that comes specifically to mind. Eaves and open stoops in the front yard setback are permitted. But we can clarify that for you. We can prepare a memo.
That's, that is helpful.
But not to the side. To the side, it's anything.
To, to the side, it's any portion of a structure that encroaches. And again, the theory there is that that's where you most often, especially on small lots like you saw tonight, that's where you obviously have a neighboring house.
Think of it as a plane.
Yes, extending from the ground up.
Yeah, and, and it's not just the mass, it's also what we hear a lot from people is light impacts from neighboring homes. If someone leaves a light on all night and so there's a lot of different thoughts that go into it.
No, that was very helpful. In fact, that, that was what I was hoping for. I did actually have a follow-up, which I hadn't written to Michelle as a question, but I, if, if I can bring it up now. It relates to the, the front yard setbacks and the massing that you referred to and I think is a concern when houses start to get built out, such as the one we just looked at tonight, although I, I think, I agree with everybody. I think we did the right thing on, on, on that one. But there, there seems to have been cases in the past that there's not a clear-cut pattern on the block and the front yard setbacks tend to vary. And what I think might be helpful for both staff and our, our board is if we had some guidances or some, some data on the average setback for the street or for the block or for certain number of homes on either side. I think that could be helpful if we, if we were able to say that the two homes on either side of the subject property or the homes within the block were all averaging 23 feet and the subject property is looking to be at 23 feet, then it's, it's a much easier decision than if we lacking that data. So, I, I don't know if, I mean, I'm, I'm suggesting that is something that would be helpful, but I'm open to that being a discussion point.
We can certainly provide that specifically when front yard variances are requested. I, I think some petitioners do a better job of doing that than others, but we can certainly make sure when we're talking front yard setbacks that we give you either a visual or, or numbers, but we can certainly do that.
I think that would be helpful.
That would be helpful and, you know, have the petitioner provide that information. I think, I think that would be good, yeah. Helps, helps make it easier for, for us. I mean, of course, we go look at the properties, but still, you can't really tell for sure.
Especially when the streets are curved and the setbacks are staggered.
Right, right.
And I, I'm not good at linear distances in my house, I just can't tell. But when you see that the houses are all, like my street curves and all the houses are staggered, I have no idea what the setback is on our street, but all these houses seem to be in line.
Yeah.
So, it's not, nothing looks out of sorts.
I think we, we put the onus on the petitioner to, to do a really good job with the petition and if staff feels like they need to kick it back to them another month, I think so be it. You need to do your homework and clearly, if you do and you come before us, I think people see that they have the chance to be successful.
Sure.
So, I have one more last almost, ooh, I wish I'd thought of it before thing, and that was on the first motion that I made tonight. I didn't feel like we discussed or that I certainly didn't put it in the motion that we restricted to a first floor. I, I would hate to think that down the line, somebody's going to say, oh, well, I can go up with a second floor. I certainly don't believe that the petitioner tonight is looking to do that. But is there a way that we can clarify that in our, in our motion that, that, that is the intent, that this was a first floor porch?
I believe I heard from you direction for us to develop a finding that supports your decision and actually, I actually noted that down, the fact that it was first floor or a single story, that it was open, that it was minimal width. So, we will craft a finding that, that tries to provide some good support for that decision.
It's easy because we use photographs of the other houses on the street as a reference point in determining that the width of the porch was appropriate.
I'm glad you heard what I was actually trying to say.
That I was thinking.
Kathy, final.
I just wanted to, I, I know you all know, but for anyone who may be watching, the zoning board after tonight will no longer be televised. All zoning board meetings will be public. I'm looking out to the audience, no one's there. Will continue to be public meetings. They will be held at City Hall until further notice. We will continue to do postings. We will continue to mail notices to surrounding neighbors. So, if anybody has any questions about that, please don't hesitate to call me or call our department.
Where can people find agendas and notices and meetings and things like that? I know they're posted at the train station, but.
The agendas are posted on the city's website, www.cityoflakeforest.com. They are posted at City Hall, they're posted at the Municipal Services Building, they're posted at two locations, at the East Train Station and one location at the West Train Station.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.